All right, everybody. Seeing 6 o'clock, I would like to open the meeting with a roll call vote for the purpose of going into executive session for reasons number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining units, and reason number one, to discuss personnel matters and return to open session.
John Burke?
Aye.
Will Senkowitz?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
Aye.
Bob Clark?
Aye.
Carolina Hernandez?
Aye.
Crystal Ing?
Aye.
Courtney Brightman?
Aye.
Jen is not here this evening.
We will begin open meeting for June 12th. The committee has had already taken a roll call vote and is coming back from executive Addition to the school committee, Mr. Alan Strauss is present. And aside from Lake Cam, is anybody here recording the meeting? All right, hearing none, I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregardless, indivisible, limited, just as for all. Thank you, everybody. Superintendent's update.
Good evening. I want to start by introducing Jackie Francisco, who is going to be the new middle school principal. We're very excited to have her. Jackie comes from Fall River, where she most recently served as the Fall River K-12 Fine Arts Director. She's a former teacher and principal. Jackie was the unanimous pick of the 14-member committee, who met with candidates for two rounds, and then sent her to the central office team for the final round. Staff, support staff, parents, PTO, and admin all made up the committee. Her enthusiasm, use of data, love of teaching and learning for all students, and building relationships impressed the committee, and we're excited that she's joining us. Jackie, welcome. I know, you know, you want to say a couple of words?
Sure, I would love to. Hello, everyone. To meet you all, I've been trying to stay, you know, abreast of what's been going on in the town as I wrap up my work in Fall River, but I'm very happy to be here, super excited. And yes, I wanted to thank the panel for being so thorough in their, in their questions, and really their passion for looking for someone that was a good balance of the empathy and the care and, and being kind and, and supporting staff and students, but also really looking for someone that can drive that great instruction for kids so that they're ready for high school. And so I'm excited to do that work with our team here in Free Town, Lakeville.
And Jackie is a new resident to town?
I am. I live on Point of Pines.
So, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As you all know, Friday night, excuse me, was graduation. I did want to highlight that Mason McCouch was highlighted on television. I'm not sure if anybody saw him, for his incredible gesture as class president, where he had placed a personal letter under the chair of every single graduate. It was highlighted on, actually, last night. A wonderful, wonderful gesture. It was very surprising to all the students, very well received. And I will continue to say that the graduation at, at Aponequit is the, the most unique and special graduation I've ever seen. Unfortunately, this year, my son graduated on the same night, which is wonderful for Jack, but in, in watching it, I'll never forget last year's and the fact that our graduates get to choose who is giving them their diploma is just beautiful. And it's a tradition I hope we always keep because it's fantastic. So congratulations to all of our graduates. The middle school promotion is on the 18th at 9:30, and we congratulate all of our eighth graders for this milestone. We wish them well as they enter the next phase of their educational journey, whether it's at Aponequit or somewhere else. $114,000 was given out to seniors at awards night, and we want to thank all of our community partnerships. Just to give everybody an idea, and I, I talked about this last year as well, I came from a high school that had almost 400 graduates, 400 and, a little more than 400 graduates, and the community partnerships did not give $114,000. So it's a testament to the dedication from all local partnerships, and they deserve our thanks. Class size updates, red numbers are for AES and FES, our anticipated enrollment, you have them in front of you. Handbooks, all schools with the exception of AES are updated, which have been provided to you. I know there's going to be some handbook presentations tonight. I want to thank both towns for approving the budget, and we will continue to do the work necessary as Jack officially joins the team in a few weeks to ensure that everything's in place, that the FY25 budget is fixed, the FY26 is at the forefront of our work. Deb Petty is here, so I want to thank her and the select board in the town of Free Town for approving some significant upgrades to FES. Wasn't sure if you were coming, so I was going to talk about them, but you can, whatever you want. I, I certainly can. You can. It's your, your.
The town of Free Town.
I think you need to go to the mic.
Thank you. Yes, the town of Free Town approved an article that funded $284,000 of much-needed repairs to the Free Town Elementary School. It will, it will be used to replace the fire strobes and fire panel, the entranceway walkway that is uneven. We are going to replace that. And there was, for election purposes, we would like a second entrance in and out of the gymnasium for, so that people can come in one door and out the second door. So that will be also, that was also funded at town meeting. I also want to thank our highway department and Chuck McHumber, because he's going to work with Greg Goodwin and do a lot of the work with, from the town side that will save a substantial amount of money, I mean, substantial, like 50, $60,000 of the work that he can do. So with the collaboration that we have, I think we're going to be able to make some great strides with the Free Town, at the Free Town Elementary School. I think another thing that was substantial that happened at that meeting, the town approved an article that set up a stabilization fund for FES that will be funded every year with, automatically with the rental income that we receive from the classrooms that are rented out, that will automatically be put in the stabilization fund, and it will be there to be used for maintenance on the building, upkeep. We also will strive to fund, put some more funding in that. We know that the roof will need to be replaced in the short interim, three-year period or so. So we know that expense is coming. So I, yeah, I'm, I'm grateful for the collaboration with Greg Goodwin and myself and Chuck McHumber, where we're able to start really bringing these things into focus and planning. I always say I'm a planner by nature. I like things to be all tied up in little bows, and so this, this goes a long way. So thank you to the town people for voting for that.
And just a reminder, the rental agreement is from South Coast Collaborative, and we rent out space both at FES and then at Grace. So thank you. Thank you for that, Deb.
Thank you.
Last meeting, we were asked to look at the SEL High School program. I want to reiterate that due to very low numbers, a full-time school adjustment counselor for that program is not needed. However, in discussion with special education administrators, the high school admin team, we do believe that we have a solution that will help both ensure a program at the high school that we are going to look to revamp, as well as the need at the middle school that we are going to, we are suggesting a .5 SEL teacher at the high school, as well as a .5 middle school adjustment counselor. We feel that this would better serve the greater needs of our students, rather than just keeping one full-time adjustment counselor. There are already two at the high school. There's only one in the middle school. We feel that this will give the middle school adjustment counselor some, some additional support, which certainly he needs, Jack can speak to that, as well as begin looking at the SEL program at the high school and how do we improve it? As of right now, there is not a need for a pair, we had this conversation, but there could be in September. There are not a large number of special education students in the program, and currently the students are doing online work. So we think this is a balance of both, so that is our proposal.
Appreciate it, Alan. Thank you.
I have a statement that I would like to read. Over the course of the last few months, statements have been made during public participation regarding stipends authorized by the school committee for two central office employees. This evening, it saddens me to have to comment on this and share once again that I was given the very difficult medical diagnosis of chronic lymphocytic leukemia in July of 2023, a diagnosis that has required extensive treatments and extended hospitalization and continual medical appointments. I am so appreciative that central office team members were willing and able to step in during the challenging time over the last 10 months. Their service and dedication enabled me to focus on my health and recovery, and their support allowed us all to continue working through treatments as we continued to move the district forward. Throughout this challenging time period, the kindness and grace extended to me and my family by this community and by our staff will always remain etched in my heart. I am incredibly grateful for the work of the school committee and for the steps they initiated to support my medical needs and to ensure for all of us as employees that our medical journeys remain private. That said, I cannot thank the central office team enough for always being professional and for going above and beyond these last 10 months despite hearing unfair comments and criticism for a plan that was frankly out of their control, that was initiated and voted on by the school committee and was cost-effective for the district. They will always have my full support. I would also suggest that any attempt to continue the narrative around my health and the connections to stipends is not what I know this community to be about. My wish for each of you is that you never have to endure any medical journey, and more importantly, that you will be supported if you're going through it, rather than being forced to defend it, which is unfathomable to me. And to everyone throughout this community who has shown grace, kindness, and care to anyone who is fighting a battle, medical or not, keep being amazing, as you have no idea how uplifting and needed these simple gestures are. I will have no further comments on this matter. That's my report.
Alan, thank you for that. I'd like to add a piece to that, from, I guess, from a school committee perspective. And I apologize for not having, I do not have something prepared as, as eloquent as yours was. Upon finding out this information, I want to say conversations that we had within the committee was, you know, take a leave, you know, take, take care of yourself, you know, we, we will, we will figure this out internally. And I can remember, I can remember you saying, well, I'm still, you know, I am still here, I am still 100% functional. And then there were conversations about, you know, when certain, I guess, I don't want, I don't really want to say milestones, but when there were certain time, places in that treatment, you know, the need might be greater, you know, to provide some coverage on site. And it was, it was a school committee meeting at that time with the significance of that position and some of those decisions that were needed. It's not something we thought you could, you could flip a switch and, you know, and bring someone in. It would, it would only be fair to the district and to those involved to identify people that would be picking up some of those duties and keep them in the loop, keep them engaged with the different things going on in the district, so that if and when the time came that they would, might be called upon to make some decisions, they would have as up-to-date information as we could. So I, I hope that that maybe answers some questions that some people might have about some, some of the timing to things. And again, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate the statement. Thank you. All right.
I would just also, I appreciate the, the update, the statement, recognizing the central office staff, and, and then to bring it back to, to the district and the ability to keep the district moving forward. I'm sure there were days you put the district before your health against the advice of doctors. That's appreciated. I'm proud of the decisions that were made to keep the district moving forward. And I was at the graduation, and that's just one sample of the positive energy in this district, and I thank you for that. So the, the update is appreciated.
Questions, comments, anyone at the table? Moving on to acceptance of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from May 29th.
So moved.
So I can.
Hearing a motion and a second. All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to accept minutes for school committee meeting for June 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. All those in favor, proceed by.
Point of order, just to make sure that we leave room for discussion if there is any.
Okay.
To the notes.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the executive session for June 5th.
So moved.
So I can.
Hearing a motion and a second. Although, any, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? And all minutes are accepted. Old business, a technology plan update. Mr. Blanchard, please, please join us.
I want to share some technology updates in the work the tech team has been addressing. Our new installation of our dock in least let fiber between Assawamset and Aponequit Regional High School represents a significant advancement in our network infrastructure. This fiber infrastructure allows us to create direct connections between buildings, eliminating the need for the firewall, the Verizon internet connection, and the IP connection at AES. By removing the AES firewall and adding an additional firewall at Aponequit Regional High School, we can then further strengthen the resilience of our network in the region. These strategic changes are to make our network more robust and secure. I'm happy to announce, we applied for the municipal cybersecurity, security awareness grant back in December, and I'm pleased to inform that we have been awarded the grant. Cyber attacks are in the news every day. It's essential to keep cybersecurity on our minds every day, with every email we open, texts we receive, and phone calls we answer. The knowledge gained through this training is valuable, not only at work, at home as well. The program will be, the program will have a new look and feel this year, and we'll be rolling this out to staff to start the training in September. We implemented the new student registration process through Aspen Online, starting with kindergarten registration this spring and proceeding, proceeding with grades one through 12, 12 this summer. We created fillable PDF forms that can be accessed by clicking on the form links during registration. You can then type directly into the PDF, save it, and upload it during the registration process. We had 180 kindergarten students complete the registration process online this spring, and other families have already started to use the online registration process for the upcoming school year. The tech team has been collecting Chromebooks for the past two weeks, starting with graduating class of 2024. This week, the team is working on collecting Chromebooks from the middle school, and next week, they'll be collecting Chromebooks from Grace, so we can identify issues to be fixed and prepare to deploy for the start of the school year. This is just one of the many technology tasks that will be, excuse me, this will be just one of the many technology tasks for the summer as we prepare for the next school year.
Does anybody have any questions?
How much was the grant?
The grant was free.
It was free?
Yeah. It's provided by the state. We applied, and we were awarded the grant to be part of the cybersecurity training. It was at no cost to the district.
No, but how much money did you get in the grant?
It's not, it's not money. You just apply.
Nothing.
You're allowed to use, use it, the training and deploy.
Rather than paying for training.
Correct.
Excellent. Any other questions for Mr. Blanchard? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Zane here? Hey, Coach. So at our last meeting, Terry, Terry Fleming, in, in same fight, I think, again, presented to you what they felt was the book that they felt made the most sense for stats and sports curriculum. We're here for a second reading, and a vote is required in order to approve the book. So Zane is here to answer any questions. I don't know if you have any for him?
Are there any questions from anybody at the table?
To approve the book or to approve the curriculum?
To approve the curriculum. No, to approve the book. Tonight, we're approving the book and the curriculum.
So, okay. Any discussion?
To approve.
Courtney, you have a question?
Oh, I do have a question. So I'm seeing 5,220 initial and 1,650 annual ongoing. Is this included in the FY25 budget?
Yes.
I'll second Mr. Clark's motion.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the book, Statistical Reasoning in Sports, and, for the stats and sports curriculum, high school course offering, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, any abstained?
Did you have a place?
No.
Four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion passes.
That's it, Zane. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
We had spoke on a topic, I want to say it was two meetings ago, about the property located at 92 Howland Road in Lakeville. That property would like to, or the owners of that property would like to sell it. Right now, there is a right of way and right of first refusal that had been given to the district in a legacy contract, I guess you'd say. Currently, the, the owners of the property have offered to, to compensate the district with $5,000 as a consideration in exchange for the district's execution, recording of a release of the right of first refusal and the right of way impacting their property. We will not, we will not be voting on this tonight, but we will open the floor for any discussion on it. Any, any questions? Anybody at the table? Okay, I will try to add this, hopefully for a vote at our, at our next meeting. Okay, moving on. FY24, 25 budget update.
So let's start with the generator?
Yes, please.
Do you have the information?
I will entertain a vote for the amendment in S R 3 for purchase and installation of a generator for the Assawamset Elementary School at a cost of approximately $250,000.
So it's important to understand that a conversation was had with the grants rep. Originally, the question was about September 30th, and there is the ability to have an extension on that, correct, Jack? So that is why we are, we are going in that direction. And one of the questions came up last time in terms of, we had originally said 200,000, and what would happen with the original, the, the extra 49,000? So now it is all going to be rolled in.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
What about all of the other stuff that was included in that, that I went over with Jack? It was about, wasn't, Jack, what was it?
When it was discovered that there was some flexibility with the end timeline, it was unnecessary to make the budget transfers in the 25 budget. You can just go directly out of S R 3.
Okay.
So that was an unnecessary step as a turnback.
Okay.
In terms of technology.
Right.
Oh.
Mr. Higgins, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, please, Kelly.
So I know that this generator has been approved in another time, and the funds were used for something else. That this is really going to happen this time?
That is our intent.
This is a fact that is going to happen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Could I entertain a motion to, for an amendment of the S R 3 for a cost of approximately $250,000 for the purchase, purchase and implementation of a generator at Assawamset Elementary School?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I believe this is a roll call vote. I believe this is a roll call vote.
Any further discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion?
Right.
I apologize.
I want this to be a roll call vote. I want the generator.
Right.
Yes.
All right.
Could we have a roll call vote, please, ready?
Sure. John Bark?
Yes.
Will Cinklet?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Carolina Hernandez?
Yes.
Kristaline?
Yes.
And Courtney Brightman?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you, everybody.
So we're rolling in the idea, I know it's in, in new business, the idea of a district, a district financial audit, and I think it makes more sense to have that discussion here as we're talking about FY 25. So there have been requests by the towns, which I agree with, that we need to do an audit. So I want to put it to all of you as to next steps. We have to, school committee has to approve it. And whether or not we get a third party, whether or not we use Lynch and Marini, that's part of the conversation. Lynch and Marini being our current auditors.
Any question, comment?
It would be my opinion that we direct you to use our own auditors first. And I, any effort you can make to expedite that, I think would be worthwhile. If you can articulate that through a motion, that would be my opinion, but further discussion.
I agree.
So where's Lynch and Marini with the FY 23 audit?
They are finishing that now.
Can we light a fire?
They did not get what they needed from the interim director, and that's why it has been delayed. They now have everything, I believe, correct, Jack? Yeah.
Do we feel a motion is warranted for, to progress this?
I personally do.
I will, I'll entertain a motion to move forward.
May I have a second?
You may, absolutely.
I, I'm sorry, thank you.
Sorry.
Hi, Carlos Lopes. I'm a member of the select board of Town of Freetown. I do appreciate you folks discussing the auditor here at the FY 25 meeting. In my opinion, in my opinion alone, I believe at this point, I believe both towns would probably be more comfortable if you go with a third-party order versus your own. Mostly being, as, as you just said, we're still waiting on FY 23, we're entering FY 25. First set of eyes might do the district well and good. So I'm sorry for being out of order, but I couldn't let you folks continue on voting before our two cents or my two cents were added into it. We trust your auditor, however, we like to have a different set of eyes looking at it. It just makes sense at this point. Thank you for your time.
Point taken, Carlos, I appreciate it. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to weigh in on, on this, on this piece?
It's not going to be cheap.
I do not know the answer to that question. Is there anybody that could speak to that?
Everybody looks at me.
We will have to.
I think that's going to have to be another, that's going to have to come in another time after we talk to the towns to see if they would actually, because I had thrown it out there. Is there anybody here from, Leah? Yeah. I'm not an auditor.
Can, can we, so.
So that would have to be, like, under Regional Finance Committee, I will say, yes, we suggested the audit, and yes, we suggested an external firm, because they could probably, I mean, our firm is still doing 2023. If it was an outside firm, maybe we could get it done a little faster. We had also brought up in that meeting if the towns would help to fund this, so that it wouldn't have to come out of the school budget. And one price that I had gotten was 35,000, and to split that between both towns.
So I have a question, because I think as part of the Regional FinCon meeting, we discussed also sending a letter and getting an opinion on the scope, right?
Yes.
So then, are we suggesting that the, do a full-blown financial audit on everything, or are we trying to go back one year, three years, two years? I don't know if we've gotten feedback on that part of it.
So Leah Fabian, Lakeville resident, also on the select board in Lakeville. So I feel like we have some really good people in both Freetown and Lakeville. One is Deb Petty. Well, Carlos, you too, but I try not to take credit for being elected, because, you know, we're just as controversial. But staff folks, we have Bob Nunes, who is, you know, he was a mayor, he was a town manager, he's acting as our town interim town administrator, and we also have Todd Hassett, who was an incredible accountant. I think these are maybe conversations that maybe you all should sit down and have and sort of keep. We certainly, as elected folks, have an opinion, but, you know, I think this needs to move to sort of like a professional kind of a situation. So I know some of you have worked with Todd, he's incredible. I'm not going to speak for him at all, but he's always willing to help, so maybe they could be the ones that you sit down with to actually get a formal direction. I'm not a finance person, I'm not an auditing person, but I know that we have three really great people. And I don't even know who your town accountant is. They could be equally as fabulous, I just don't know who that, that person is.
Ms. Fabian, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. LeCamer.
Margaret French, Freetown Finance. Might I suggest that we take Leah's suggestions of talking to those people and bring it to the Regional Finance Subcommittee? And that way, you've got representation from both towns, the school committee, you can invite those people and, and have a conversation that way to see where to go and how to do it. That's just my suggestion.
Thank you, Margaret.
Christopher Blanca, Lakeville Finance Committee Chair. I echo Ms. French's recommendation too, and that goes to Ms. Brightman's question about scope of the audit. I believe the best group to define that would be the Regional Finance Subcommittee.
I agree with that, thank you. Mr. LeCamer, go ahead.
Richard LeCamer in Lakeville. I, I believe the current audit firm has been here for a long time, right? How long, 10 years, more?
More than that, I believe.
Okay, so I would be concerned that, surprised that he hasn't identified some, already some management issues having to do with, you know, what's going on here at the region having to do with the school budget. So I would definitely recommend that you get a third party to come in and look at this. As soon as the audit is done, I would recommend that the auditor comes in and presents the findings of that audit, so everybody knows, you know, what's in that audit and what management recommendations that they, they should make. And I think, well, I made the suggestion that the Regional Finance Committee, because there's a lot of things that need to be looked at and need to be addressed, and that needs to be done. So the list is going to be quite long. So this, in my opinion, but I could be wrong. But, you know, I don't know why the town should have to pay for this. First of all, the towns, and correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, neither town has appropriated any money, you know, for this audit, which means it'll get delayed, whereas you can spend the money out of your A and D, you know, to do that audit right away. So I assume I'm correct, right, Deb?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeCamer.
I do support out of A and D. I support it. I'm an out of A and D.
Yeah, and thank you for the comments. I, I do like the idea of presenting the findings as well. I think that makes great sense. So we then now have to explore third-party options and help?
I think, I think the first step through the chair, that the first step would be getting a Regional FinCon meeting scheduled on the books, inviting the, the folks from both towns that need to be there at the table to have the conversation. And I think the Regional FinCon will have some direction coming out of that meeting.
Great.
Any other discussion, other questions? Any other items related to the FY 24-25 budget?
So we're looking forward to Jack getting on board. I want to thank him again. He did not ask for what's happened over the last number of weeks, and his professionalism has been outstanding. He will be an incredible asset to, to this team, without question. We are continually looking at, and I do want to go back to one thing in regard to where the money is going to come from for the position, the SEL position. What we talked about was the idea that the Portuguese teacher, which was not being hired because Ms. Desert did a really good job in understanding that numbers-wise, students could be put into classes and not making class load too heavy, that we will be using that salary for that. So it is not an extra expense.
Outstanding.
In terms of where we are, we are continuing to go through, I mean, Mr. Gracia made some statements at our last meeting that he was finding things, he and his team, as he said. So we are beginning to go through line by line, but again, until Jack is, is really available, it gets much more complex as we're finishing the year. We are looking at open purchase orders that are not being utilized, and I want to thank Greg Goodwin for some work that he has done to look at some things. And we're probably a week away from giving more information in terms of reductions. We, we were given the idea of 600,000, and we are, we are very close to it, but I don't want to give exact numbers, we will have it for our next meeting. I, I do know that Ms. Fabian had mentioned the idea that we get together over the summer. That was discussed, and so I think, John, you should speak to that as the chair.
Yeah, I certainly can. I, I speak for the committee in saying, you know, we, you know, we want to, we want to make things right by the district, by the towns, you know, we are, we are committed, you know, to, to fixing whatever budget concerns there are, you know, and we will continue, you know, to meet as needed, you know, to make things right. Questions, anybody at the table? Okay. Moving on to public participation. We hold public participation in accordance with our policy.
I think we got some reaction. Should we set a meeting date? Do we have it on the meeting schedule?
I was going to do it at the end.
I think we got a reaction.
Allow each speaker approximately three minutes, during which time you can speak about topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee.
Hi, hello, Lakeville. Some tough decisions are being made, but they need to be made. And in light of your dedication, which is nice to hear, to fixing this, I think you should all be going to summer school this year. I don't think you should be taking vacation. This is the mess that you're faced with, and I think that you should not be going vacation. I think you should stay in session, be in whatever way you need to, and, and get this straightened out, because there's, there's a big road ahead with an audit. You've got, you've got things to put in order. Please don't go on vacation.
Christopher Blanca, Lakeville Finance Committee. I'd like clarification regarding the audit. So no vote was taken, was, do I understand the decision is you're going to pass that decision authority to the Regional Finance Subcommittee, or will the school committee take a vote and define, you know, who's going to pay for the audit, external audit, and give authority to the Regional Finance Subcommittee? So no vote was taken, so can you clarify that?
Consensus, quite consensus. I don't think you have to take a vote on that.
Okay, so the consensus is that an external audit to be funded by the school committee with the Regional Finance Subcommittee to define the scope. Is that my understanding?
That, that was my understanding also, Chris.
Okay.
I apologize for the non-vote.
Okay, thank you.
So Leah Fabian on the Lakeville Select Board, but I'm not representing the Select Board here, I'm representing myself as an elected official in Lakeville in my 10th year. So things aren't always comfortable, decisions, and this is strictly to the Select, the school committee. It's not always comfortable, it's not always pleasant, it's not always nice, it's not always fun. It's certainly much better when it is all those things. However, as much respect as I have for your decision and wanting to keep things private for employees, we've done the same thing, okay? I mean, I had a wonderful experience, actually, Rich LeCamer was still on the board, where we had a town employee who had just had a baby with his wife and used up all his sick time and then got hurt. And we had an outpouring of donated sick time from employees, and we couldn't tell anyone. And it was fantastic, because that was an executive session. So there certainly is some things that take place in executive session. However, when you're signing contracts with people on stipends, those are supposed to be done in open session. So you find a way, and we've, we had a hard time, we had one human resource director, we went on to another one, now we're on to a third one. We finally hit the jackpot. You really have to trust some of these folks that you put in these roles, and they can help you, they can guide you. That's just advice, and it's just here, like I said, 10th year, I'm still learning. My, my, my other different, in a different way, and my, my door is always open, my phone, everyone has my number in town from the dry cleaning days, so I'm the easiest person to get ahold of. So I still have a concern about, and again, this goes back to human resources as well. The town of Lakeville was looking at a 16% increase in health insurance. We had to change our entire health insurance. We had to create a committee represented by employees and retirees and whatever, and this human resource person helped us through it. And we were looking, and I think it ended up being only a five or six percent increase. That would have blown our whole Lakeville budget. We would have had to cut more than $1 million out of our budget. And again, going back to the folks that work at Town Hall, we have really, really great, talented people, and I'm never not going to take someone's call, just like when I didn't know anything, before I ever, you know, became a select board person, I knew Rich LeCamer from the dry cleaners. I called him and I said, hey, can you explain something to me? That's the way we keep each other, you know, and we strengthen the relationship. So the only other thing is if we could get, you know, a follow-up on that $250,000 when you folks have a, I know you knew that there was the change, I think that's what Jack said, but, you know, if you get some more information on that, I'd be curious. And again, that's just something else that we don't want to happen again. If you know that there was going to be a savings of that $250,000. don't want to happen again. If you know that there was going to be a savings of that $250,000, because again, you know, we, with the change in the assessment, we were able to restore our IT budget in Lakeville, which was gonna take a real big hit. So we're, you know, we're in a precarious situation. And I know Free Town's better, but we've been saying this now, you know, for a while. So, you know, those are my two, my two big things. And I know that it's not always easy. It's certainly not easy to go into open session and discuss contracts and, you know, you're, anything. Union stuff, it's tough, because once you go into open session, everyone has fair game. And that's why I said a few meetings ago, a couple months ago, I have a hate folder, because when you go into open session, we don't like it, and it's uncomfortable, but sometimes the law requires it. So just a lesson for you, Jack.
Thank you very much.
Sherri Behren, Lakeville. I'm actually here for myself, but I'm here to read a statement from Maureen Candido. Maureen Candido is a Lakeville Board of Select member. She couldn't be here tonight, and she asked if I would read this. And I have a copy for all of you. "Good evening. I regret that I am unable to attend this meeting due to a work conflict, but I want to ensure my thoughts are known to the school committee and to the community at large. As a member of the Lakeville School Select Board, we have been alerted to concerns over the school budget from multiple sources over the last few weeks. These concerns have been echoed by many members of the public and across various social media platforms. Our Select Board unanimously advocated for the school committee to conduct an audit to address the irregularities that led to such a significant accounting error, which poses a potentially devastating consequence to both the schools and to our town at large. However, in my role as a member of the Board, we only have the power to suggest to you. The Regional School Committee is the only entity with the authority to act in this situation. While we don't often involve ourselves in these matters by vote, the seriousness of this issue dictated our involvement. Switching hats, I now speak as a concerned member of the community, representing only myself. This issue requires a root cause analysis. It needs to be conducted much sooner than any formal audit could accomplish. The $800,000 discrepancy will not be resolved by using one-time funds or depleting E and D. Such an issue will create a situation where the town can no longer support the school's request year after year. This issue cannot wait for the school committee to reconvene until after the summer. This needs immediate action. I urge the Board to find actionable solutions that do not impact our teachers, our students, and especially our most vulnerable students who require extra support. While members of the school committee may not be directly to blame for what has occurred, you are all certainly responsible for finding a resolution and do it expediently. I implore you to work toward a solution that is the best interest of the schools and the community. Thank you for your attention on this critical matter. Sincerely, Maureen Candido." I concur with her, and I would ask that you give serious consideration to giving the next school committee date that you are going to be meeting. I say that for a couple of different reasons. First of all, we have not heard who you folks have chosen for our Director of Special Education director coming up. And it's, you can't tell us tonight because there's no vote on the agenda. We certainly don't want to wait on that. We would, there are many parents who would like to know who the Director of Student Services is going to be. So it's another reason why you really need to find a time soon, preferably before July 1st, so she can start. Thank you.
Thank you, Sher.
Which is gonna pass this out like a teacher.
Good evening. Bill Kowalski, 92, Howland Road. Good to see you again. Thank you for considering our offer. I am disappointed, didn't take a vote today, but just started way back in March. When I visited here in April, I think I mentioned that we really don't want to move, but because of medical reasons, we need to. And so just, I would beseech you, whatever it takes to reach closure on this, I don't think it's, there's any major obstacles, but if there's anything that we can help with to facilitate this, I am available whenever, because we just want to move on. So thank you very much. Appreciate all the consideration.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Kowalski, thank you very much. Mr. LaCamera, go ahead.
Rich LaCamera, Lakeville. First of all, I want to thank the committee for voting for the generator finally. Took two and a half months to get it done, but I'm glad it's done, and hopefully we can move on from that. It's really too bad that it happened, but thank you anyways. I got a couple of things having to do with the budget itself. We got two problems here. We have the $800,000 error that was made that was not included in the budget, and now we're talking about taking cuts, you know, with the budget. So I was kind of taken back that the former chairman of the school committee said that he knew about the $250,000 surplus in the health insurance account. I wanted to ask why the assessment was not reduced from the budget to help the towns out.
You want me to, to the chair, you want me to address that?
If you can, you can.
Yeah, absolutely, Rich. I think, I think when I said we knew, right, there was inklings from district office that we were concerned about health insurance, right? And indications from them was that it was gonna come in significantly lower. Didn't have a number at any point, but we, this has been the case with several budget seasons, right? Health insurance always comes in a little bit high. There has, to Leah's point, there's been times where we have gone out to bid to get it lower. But I think, and I'd have to go back and check, and check with Alan and team, I don't know if that was built into the assessment and at what point. Can certainly work to get you that answer, for sure.
A higher number was put into the assessment that the towns voted on, and you said at the meeting that April 1st, prior to April 1st, you knew what the percentage of the health insurance was gonna be. It went from 10% down to, I believe, the superintendent, like Jack said, 4.3%. So it was a significant savings. So knowing the towns, Lakeville, I'm not speaking for Free Town, knowing that Lakeville was hurting trying to balance their budget, that should have been done right up front. The second thing is, is that last year, any capital expenditures that was voted by the school committee was paid out of E and D. And your E and D is at $1.9 million, I believe, Jack? I'm sorry, $1.7 million, which is the second highest that surplus has ever been. So why didn't, why did the school committee last year vote to use the E and D to do the capital items, and this year they didn't? Nobody wants to speak up?
Is there, is there someone that wants to answer the question? I don't have an answer for you at the moment, Rich.
Well, you were the chairman, you know, for that budget.
Correct. Yeah. Can't speak to why we chose to fund those capital improvements out of E and D last year. I know it was something that was discussed as a committee. That discussion has not taken place during this budget session. That's, I don't know what else to tell you, Rich.
So what I recommend that the school committee do is that they re-certify the assessments to the town and lower the assessments by $500,000.
Noted.
Rich, thank you.
Is it gonna be on the next agenda to discuss?
I can add it to the next agenda to discuss.
I mean, I don't see any reason why, you know, you got the $800,000 problem that was created. You got all this school choice money, circuit breaker money, you know, that's gonna, that could be used to offset that. Now, do you have to make cuts? Yes, you do. But these weren't cuts that had anything to do with that $800,000 problem. These were things that should have been done as far as the budget process. So I ask you to please address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Cook, Lakeville. I had not planned on getting up here to speak today, but I was compelled to. Superintendent Strauss, thank you for sharing what you did. I'm sorry you had to share what you did, but I appreciate that. To the school committee, I appreciate your compassion in keeping that confidential, because as a human being, I would hope that others could do that for me. I understand there's issues on the other side that everyone's about with the stipends, but I do just want to say, as a human being, I appreciate how all of you handled the situation. And I also want to thank all the finance committees from our towns, because I do appreciate all the work that you guys have put in to find the issues in the budget. I do appreciate all of that. And I know that it's not your job to do that, and you've taken your time, your personal time to do so, and that is appreciated. I just hope, which I feel tonight, there is a little bit more of a sign of a cohesive working together, you know, discussing with FinCom, the issues with the audit, et cetera, because I feel like it's just gotten a little ugly lately. And as a resident of Lakeville, it stings how vicious people have been lately. And I just hope we can do better and set a better example for our kids.
Thank you.
Deborah Petty, town of Free Town, town administrator. I have great concerns with the budget. We've had multiple conversations with the budget about the budget, the budget error of $800,000. The health insurance piece that we knew about but didn't get put in the budget, didn't get adjusted in the budget. The $1.9 million that Derek Gracia pointed out that I believe to be true. And I say that because the interim finance director had pointed out that there was a $500,000 error in last year's budget, yet we were able to fund that, and we were able to fund a master plan to the tune of $250,000. So we were able to find, or I should say, school committee, school, $750,000 extra in last year's budget to fund things that we wanted to fund. And our E and Ds maxed out, right? We ended up, the towns got money back because the E and D was maxed out, which is funded by excess budget levy. This year's budget, and I stood up here last year and said the budgets are not sustainable. You just keep increasing them. We cannot continue as towns to fund these budgets. Same thing happened this year, although the assessments have come down because we're using one-time monies. It cannot continue this way. I have no faith in that budget. I don't know if it's $800,000 off, 1.9 million off, 800 plus 250, all the three, I have no idea. I suggest you really start from scratch with this new budget. I have worked very short time with Mr. Higgins. He seems fabulous. I think with his help and his guidance, you could come up with a budget that's realistic, that doesn't have $2 million of fat in it. And if there is fat in the budget, which I believe there is, I think with that fat, we make, the school committee makes some decisions. Maybe we get some paraprofessionals back. Maybe we pay substitute teachers what they should be paid so we can get them, so that the powers don't have to cover for substitutes. Maybe we bring back the special needs program that is clearly affecting, although maybe few students, it's profound to those students. And if I was a parent of one of those students, I'd be fighting like heck to get it back, especially, I mean, we all can appreciate that, right? So I think there's a lot of work, an immense amount of work that needs to be done on this budget. But I think you need to throw the budget out and start from scratch. And then you need to get a number that makes sense, that we're all involved in, because I have no confidence in the budget currently. I want to be involved just so I have confidence in that final number, so that I can take it back to my board and the townspeople and say, you know what, we went through some transformation. It was tough, but everybody came together. We all have confidence in this new budget. This budget will work, and we can sustain it, and it will meet the needs of our children. I think that we've so skewed this budget. I think it's fat on the top. The administrations are getting stipends and big bonuses and whatever, and the students are not getting, the teachers are not getting paraprofessionals. No, we're here to educate these children. They need, the teachers, you know, last year, you stood here and you told me that we were gonna have this 30% increase in special needs students, but we're not giving these teachers who have to teach these extra, these students, any paraprofessionals or any support. Come on. We're better than that. We are better than that. And I just urge you all that we just throw that budget out, and we start from scratch. And then if we have to make adjustments at the fall town meeting, we do it. That's what I have to say about the budget. On another note, I mean, I don't know if it's the elephant in the room, but we know Superintendent Strauss had had an interview with Hingham to go there as principal. What are we doing? I don't know. I'm assuming there's no final decisions, but are we looking at what we're gonna do without a superintendent pretty soon? I think that's real important, whether we, we, we...
I hear your concern.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's a concern, and I think that we would like to, as the town, because it's an important decision, be involved in that.
Yes.
You know, what happens and who we put in interim while you decide what you're gonna do. So I just want to put that out there, that we are real angst about what's going to happen, and we want to be involved.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again, everybody. I'm still Carlos Lopes. I am still a member of the Lakeville Select Board. Oh, I'm sorry, Free Town. Been a long day. Sorry, Lakeville, can't hear me just yet. All right. So it's not easy being on this board. I understand that. It's not easy coming up to this podium to discuss with you. I take Ms. Cook and her words seriously. There's been a lot of angst. There's been a lot of back and forth, both Lakeville and Free Town residents regarding how the school committee, the district's operating. So I encourage all of you to look deep, and as far as the summer recess, in my opinion, I think you throw it out the window, you continue the harder work you're doing. I'm all for vacation time. I'm all for taking time away from your family, but there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of new members that need to be caught up to what's going on, right? A lot of numbers to be crunched. I encourage you all to really look at that and give us the information that the district is looking for, right, which is transparency. I too was gonna ask the superintendent regarding his interview with Hingham. You know, it's his business as far as what he does for his work, and it's your passion to be a principal. I understand that. I understand. I'd rather go to a job I have passion in more towards one than the other. So I encourage you to pursue that. However, Ms. Petty is correct. We need to make decisions regarding, as both towns, both Lakeville and Free Town, as far as what the next steps are. Working with the school district, making sure that we have someone that represents everybody, not just this class, that class, this, these people, those people, everybody, the entire district. And that's putting us all in the same room and really getting down to the details. If you are selected, I congratulate you on the new position, and I truly do, in your future endeavors. However, moving forward, we need to know what's going on, right? A lot of the angst that Ms. Cook was speaking of could be due to transparency. We need to know what's going on. It's our children. And as we see, when we hear about our children, we get very passionate about that, right? Some of us take us to the next level, others stay mellow, others kind of, you know, hamper down, and that's fine, right? We all deal with things differently. But the one thing I can honestly say is, we're all passionate about what's going on here, whether it's the finances that are kind of in disarray at this moment. We can all agree to that, right? And what the next steps are, we need to make sure we're all in the same, on the same page when that comes to that. All right? So, and one last thing. We've asked this question 10 ways from Sunday. Ms. Petty's even forwarded this request. What is going on with the superintendent's evaluation? I'm up here asking for an answer, not for the next step. We've asked this question over several meetings. There's a process that you folks were going through as far as the superintendent's evaluation, pros and cons, whatever it is. Pros and cons, whatever it is, we can handle it. What's the next step?
So I've answered this, Carlos, publicly a couple times. So the superintendent, barring he's, he's here next year, right, will have a summative evaluation at the end of this year. Superintendent Evaluation Committee continues to go into the portal, check the evidence that he's putting into the software based off the superintendent's rubric. What we do at the end is we come together, we look at the evidence, we survey the committee, we survey staff, and then we rate him out, very similar to how building principals are evaluated, very similar to how teachers are evaluated. It's the same tool, same process. So he's coming at the end of a two-year period. His summative evaluation will be completed this summer, right? And then those findings from that summative evaluation have to be made public. So we'll have to put a presentation together, present to the school committee, present to the community, and go from there. So that's, that's where we're at. Superintendent has been evaluated throughout, superintendent's received feedback throughout, but that's where we're at. Anything else from the superintendent evaluation committee that I missed?
I think you make a good point. The evidence continues to get posted. It's consistent with the timeline that we do for our teachers and administrators. That's accurate information.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Carlos.
Oh, one last question regarding 92 Holland Road. Can you fill me in? What's that about? Is that extra land that he wants to sell? If I don't know about it, it means not many people know about it as well. Any insight on that, as far as the 92 Holland Road parcel? Do you want to sell this house?
Yeah, and it's a right of way that I guess there was anything there for this people.
Thank you. Yeah. Been busy lately. Thank you for answering my questions. Did I miss anything?
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in response to the evaluation question, Superintendent Strauss, contract calls for an evaluation annually. That's what I've been asking for. He's been here two years. I'm asking for last year's.
So you want to see his formative evaluation to the halfway point? We can absolutely provide that for you.
So, I mean, you're telling me that his contract calls for an annual evaluation?
Correct.
You're saying they only get done every two years?
Correct. So it's with the education evaluation, right, that you can be on a one-year plan or a two-year plan. So at the end of his first year, he was given a formative checkpoint, right? He was evaluated against the rubric. We have the document. It's been, it's been completed. We got to wait for the end of the second year to do a summative, right? And our rationale behind doing it that way, Deb, is that the superintendent has put together some, some goals, some longer-term goals, that it just doesn't make sense evaluating him on a one-year cycle. Very similar with our, our school improvement plans and everything that we're doing as a district. So we have the formative done. We've met with the superintendent. We've discussed the formative evaluation, that midpoint checkpoint.
So I've asked for that multiple times. Is that, is that confidential information?
We can certainly look into it. I mean, it's, it's a public document. It's going to be a public document. I don't know whether we can...
It's been, it's been signed by all parties, so we can share that.
Yeah, yeah, can absolutely share it with you. But that's where we're at. So at the end of year two, he'll have his summative. There's definitely going to be some feedback in year two that he didn't get year one. There's going to be some things that he grew on year two, and that's, that's where we're at.
And I think I asked in, in the past if that, is the second-year evaluation going to be open to public input, teachers, maybe town officials? And you had said that you do, you could do a survey.
Yep. Yeah, we've discussed that, right? We've done a little bit of research trying to find a 360 survey that's going to encompass all parties. We are doing that. I know we've done one in the past for Rick.
That's what you had said. So I just want, I'm not sure what's going to happen, given this new information, so it may all be mute in terms of what goes forward.
Right.
But if not, then I think that you definitely need to open this up for input from the people that work collaboratively with Superintendent Strauss.
Yeah, not, there's no unwillingness here to do that.
Thank you, Deb.
So just clarification too on the, on the review. So every other employee, I believe, has the right to confidentiality, but I really thought that the superintendent is sort of like the town administrator, where it's all out in the open. You can't even go into executive session to talk about the review. It has to be discussed in open session. So can we, who's, who's the, I don't even know who the school's lawyers are. But Towne Free Town has KP Law, right?
Yes.
Who is your lawyers? Can we get a breakdown from them on how it's actually supposed to be done?
You can check on Desi.
I can find out that information for you.
Yeah, because I, you know, but again, right, you know, this is, this is my point. This is one of these things that, you know, we don't like. We work collaboratively with the town administrators every single day, and then we have to sit down in front of a camera and, you know, and discuss their, and, and it's good. Sometimes there's things that, where we conflict, but it doesn't do anyone any good if we don't discuss it publicly, and that's what they sign up for. So I can only equate it to the experiences I've had with the evaluations with the town administrators. Every other person in, I can't imagine the principals' evaluations are public information. Are they? I don't know, but our department heads are not, so that goes in their employment folder. It's a different position, so I'm asking for clarification on the entire process.
I will, I will get that clarification for you later. Crystal, go ahead.
You can find out how they are supposed to be done on Desi. Desi even has a video on how superintendent evaluations are supposed to be done. You're welcome.
Sherry Behr in Lakeville. When was the formative evaluation completed?
It was probably signed, it was completed over last summer. It was probably signed, I can't remember when the date we signed it.
No, it was completed before summer.
Completed before summer, right?
Yeah, prior in the spring.
Yep.
I can look at the date you signed it.
It's towards the end of last school year.
Yep.
Did all members take part in that?
Yes, there was a smaller committee and then presented to the bigger committee.
Yep, the formative was, was presented to the school committee as a whole, yep, to provide feedback and input.
So you each individually did an evaluation, and then you did a summary?
No, what we did was we met as a superintendent evaluation subcommittee. We went through all of Superintendent Strauss's evidence that he posted per, per the rubric. We went through the rubric, analyzed the rubric, had some discussions regarding whether he was, there was feedback there, and he was proficient or needs improvement or exemplary. We typed up the document based off the rubric, shared that with the committee for their feedback, and then sat down with Mr. Strauss to discuss.
Yeah, it only had consistent, Sherry, when you were on the committee. The only difference, this cycle, we actually used the Teach Point software, which facilitated it for so...
I'll be forwarding that, please, and I'd like the date of it.
Okay.
So just so that you're aware. I need a foreword on that.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Mr. Blanco?
My final comment on the budget. I publicly stated during town meeting that I am committed to calling for the school committee to reconsider the budget. Mr. Khan jumped the gun a little bit on me on that with his request to reconsider the budget with a 500K reduction. My recommendation is to stop at your next school committee with a vote to reconsider the budget, with the objective, obviously, of lowering it, but not specifically tied to an amount, because we got some great ideas from, that Ms. Petty, regarding restoring some positions and stuff like that, and considering the information that we learned last week regarding potential surpluses, insurance reductions, and stuff like that. So my recommendation is to start with a vote to reconsider the budget the next meeting, put that together with some significant reductions, or maybe some adjustments and so forth, and then come back and then presenting that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Good. Okay.
Is there anyone else for public participation? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to new business. 2024, 2025 handbooks and program of studies.
So you have the changes in front of you. Mr. Ward is not here, but I believe, Ms. Pennault, are you speaking for, or is Dr. Sullivan, are you speaking for FES? For Mike?
You are now.
So yes, you want to come up and do the two of you?
Hi, everybody. I just have two small things. So I, I provided this, I don't know if, when I did, everyone gets, okay. So the one that's in common for Michael Ward and myself over, over at FES and Gray's is just some clarity on cell phones. We're just seeing an uptick in the children that have cell phones at the intermediate level. For example, when I started there, it would be almost nine years ago, our first Halloween party, which was, with the PTO hosted it, and I had a child with a cellphone, and everyone was saying, "Oh, my goodness, there's a child with a cellphone." That was one. So there's, over the course of eight years, there's been an uptick of them, children having them, for lots of reasons. Lots of parents want them to have them, they need to have them, but the, having them out in the classroom piece, we're not really having a huge problem, but we're just look, moving forward, saying, "We are seeing them now, so let's follow suit with the middle school and align with their policy." So the verbiage from this, that, that Michael would like to adopt and I would like to adopt is, is right out of the middle school's handbook that Jack shared with us, and we just, the infraction piece of, you know, first offense and that sort of thing, I didn't think that was necessary for either one of us, and Mike didn't either. So there's that piece. The other, first one on the sheet that I gave you was page three, and that's just some clarity on vacation. That's something else that we're seeing uptick on. In part of my school improvement plan was looking at attendance. Part of the issues with chronic absenteeism and the numbers that we're looking at, lots of times it's vacations that are taken during the school, you know, during the school year, not during school vacation weeks, and I think that's a result of the economy. We all know about that, traveling during the school vacation weeks. So we oftentimes have families who proactively say, "Can we have the homework ahead of time, or the work ahead of time?" But in education, we know that when we're teaching, we don't know for certain what the homework's going to be in two to three days or four days. Homework tells us whether the children receive the curriculum that we delivered, and we don't know that until we get the homework back, so we can't really prepare that in advance. So that was just some clarity on that, that no, we cannot give you the homework ahead of time, and just to have it there in the handbook. So that's just Gray's. Those are the only two things I have this year.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions with Dr. Sullivan?
I did have a question about the cellphone and personal devices. I know. No, it's okay. I did have a question about the cell phones and the personal devices. So I know, you know, as a parent and a school committee member, you know, one of my concerns is the cell phones and the distraction. They could be taking pictures or videos. Do we think this is enough? Like, have we considered, like, the yonder pouches? I know some schools are doing that.
They do, that, Kayla, don't you do that at high school? Do you do the pouches? No, they don't do it at all. No, I don't think, I don't think for us right now, I do not think there are enough that we do that, that we would take away. In fact, I think it would look like an equity issue that I don't want to get involved in. We still have enough children that do not have them, and then it would look like, you know, all the other, you're lining up everybody that has one, and, and, you know, showing the ones that don't have one yet, by family choice or economics or whatever it is, you know. I don't think we have enough. Yeah, I think we will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You did have this, this was approved by a school council.
Yes, I did.
They had a conversation.
All of this was approved by school council, and I think I have that on there.
Correct. I just think it's important for people to know.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Mercedes.
I'll meet you there. I know, right? So when I was on school council in the intermediate school, Gray's and the high school, I remember addressing that school vacation thing, and we had locked it in pretty well. I guess in the nine years that my kids have been out, maybe that's all changed now?
Tell me, what is, what was it, what did it say?
So we had put in a policy that said, "There will be no effort made to provide homework ahead of time."
Well, well, I don't know that, I don't know that in my experience in, Sarah Allen, I'm gonna, I don't, Sarah's on my school council and has been in the building longer than I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The vacation piece, we talked, you know, we talked, we talked about the homework, like, on absences and the makeup time for that, but I don't think so.
And it's also classwork, too. And what would happen is, you might give it to the families, and then who's going to realistically do homework on vacation?
Right, and that was the problem, was that they were, the teachers were going out of their way to get all this work together, and then the kids were coming back from vacation, and they never even did the work that they were. And I really thought it was addressed, and we also made a special provision, I think, in the high school for medical, like, if it was a medical absence, and we knew, we wanted to have those kids have every opportunity to do the work when, but I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what it...
It's very simple.
Stephanie says she has it in AES now, so I don't know when it came out of the Gray's one, but, thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Pennault? Mr. Higgins?
Thank you. In the, for the 2024-25 middle school handbook, there are obviously multiple changes that include just formatting and updating contact information, including a new principal. But there were two elements that are of particular note that should be included in this discussion, and that is, first, in terms of adding to our academic integrity policy, language regarding the use of artificial intelligence for schoolwork for students, identifying for our students that that includes, that, that falls under academic dishonesty, and in, in a way, plagiarism. So those are, being, as a part of the handbook, is now is obviously enforceable, but also a big part of our handbook around academic dishonesty is around the instruction that goes along with that. It's not just enough to establish that there are consequences for academic dishonesty, but to understand what is the purpose of having academic integrity when it comes to presenting your own material. So that is in there, inclusion of artificial intelligence. And then there was a need to clarify some language regarding the, our field trip policy. There's a few pieces to that. One is to make sure that we put, we codified that students who, who may be unable to afford the, the cost of a field trip, that they're still obviously going to be a participant in the field trip, and that we can, we can make sure that that's taken care of. That had not been in there. I just wanted to make sure it was codified in language. Also defining times about when field trips should not be taking place during the school year, specifically around standardized testing periods of time. And then defining our practice for students who choose not to participate on a field trip, if they choose to stay in school on that day. So we have teams, and so we have three, sort of three levels of response, depending on what the field trip, how the field trip might be delivered. So if a field trip might be, in some cases, we might have just one team going, and then the second team is going to go a few days later. So if a student chose not to participate, then they could just follow a similar schedule on the other team. If both teams are going, such that there's not another class going on at the same time, we would, we would potentially have the opportunity for a substitute teacher that could provide that instruction. And then third option would be in a monitored environment where we would have the student working on independent work that would be similar to the things that are going on in the field trip. And that is, those are the updates relative to that.
Thanks, Jack.
Any questions for Mr. Higgins? Higgins, thank you.
Kayla?
We just have a couple of things ourself. At the request of a former school committee member, she had asked us to take a look at our bathroom policy. This is not a change. It's simply to put that into the handbook, to say that restrooms are available, and these are the kinds that we have. We have men's, women's, all-gender, and staff bathrooms. The other change is just to remove a consequence of a lunch detention, to make that an office detention. We try to make our lunch attendants related to the offense, so if a student is having difficulty behaving in there, that they're not able to do that with their friends. That was a small change. And the last one was to adjust the food and drink policy, to remove the, the food component and to leave in the ability to have drinks in the classroom. And this was done by our faculty council and then our school council.
Anybody, any questions on this, Zer? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to the principals. If you're freezing, you can leave.
So as you know, and we very much appreciate, the school committee supported the purchase of Amplify ELA curriculum for our ELA classes for all three grades, except the eighth grade, and we've been rolling it out this year, and it has been, I think, quite effective. We are seeing a significant amount more of writing from our students, which has been really nice to see. What, though, in terms of our sixth grade curriculum, if you'll know, you may know that we have two classes in sixth grade that are focused on ELA. We identify them quite creatively, ELA I and ELA II. But what's happened is, is that the ELA comprehensive, the Amplify, I should say, the ELA Amplify is such a comprehensive coverage of the ELA standards. We thought we had a real opportunity to expand what we could do in ELA II to provide additional instruction to our students in that environment. So, we have come, the ELA II class we're proposing is the addition to what it's already, what's already done in terms of instruction around nonfiction reading and writing, but also adding to it some elements of digital usage. So, instruction on how to write an email appropriately, how to utilize Google Docs, how to utilize Google Sheets, how to create a spreadsheet that will be appropriate and that's informative. So, utilizing those, those skills that they're going to be using not only in sixth grade, but all the way certainly through high school, as they're creating presentations and they're developing papers and so forth. So, it's an expansion and an adjustment to the way that ELA II is going to be done, and it has a new name, literacy in the digital age. LVA is how it will be often. And I will say that when we talked about it, we wanted to make sure that the acronym LVA didn't mean something else, that we didn't know about, and that we were going to be laughed at. That's okay. That's nice and boring.
Any questions for the program of studies? Mr. Higgins, thank you. All right, moving on, our next item. We have a custodial contract to be voted on. Somebody care to speak to the contract?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, and then obviously Jack might have you come back up to the podium here in a second, too. So, we have reached a tentative agreement with Asme and our custodians. What I'll say publicly is just, it's, it's an absolute joy to sit down at the table with these folks and be able to negotiate a contract and have some healthy dialogue back and forth. They're an extremely easy group to negotiate with, and we were able to, what we believe is really kind of find some common ground and have a win for both sides, right? For the district, some of the things that were really important to us going into negotiations was really trying to streamline and get everyone on one salary schedule and try to save central office, the kind of headache of figuring out differentials and stipends and hourly and for whether you're first shift, second shift, third shift, it would just seem like a lot to manage. So, what we were able to do is consolidate, and a little bit of a history here, way back prior, when we were negotiating prior to 2012, we input a two-step salary structure for all custodians that were hired after 2012. We thought that would be a strategy to kind of build in a little bit of sustainability within our budget, but there were some unintended consequences there, and I'm sure Greg could speak to this, where all custodians that we were hiring after 2012, they would come in, and a year later, they were maxed out, and they knew that outside of contract negotiations, they weren't going to get a raise, right? So, it's been well documented, we've had a hard time finding custodians. So, what Jack, and this was really Jack driving this bus, and I can't commend him enough for, for his work, is really consolidating the two salary schedules down into one, one six-step schedule. And what we've done is we've baked in stipends, we've baked in differentials, all into one payment to make it very, very easy for folks to be able to follow. So, we are in a good place. The second thing that we were able to get out of negotiations is their willingness to sit down and collaborate on an evaluation tool. Custodians within this district have been evaluated in many different ways. We, we thought there was a lot of, a lot of value in being able to sit down, communicate, collaborate on a evaluation tool, and, and in the future, build in some incentives, right, based off that evaluation, in the future, not this contract. We do feel comfortable that we'll be able to fund this. But Jack, anything I missed there from a financial piece? I'm sure there's a couple of things. Is there anything you want to touch upon?
Just for a point of clarity, relative to the simplifying, if you will, of the salary schedules, the way it was identified is that we do have differentials for custodians who work second shift or weekends. Those differentials did not change, but what we ultimately did was we created salary schedules depending on your assignment. So, from the perspective of the custodians, it's very clear when we're negotiating with a, with a new custodian that we're planning on hiring, they can very clearly see what their potential salary is going to be, what their hourly rate will be. In addition to that, it's, it's a lot simpler for payroll, obviously, instead of having to identify a differential and potentially a stipend that might be linked to it as well. The, previously, the, this two-step was also significantly under what the six-step was for the veteran custodians. The new base salary schedule that we work from, so we start with a first ship, excuse me, a first shift custodian, that's the base salary schedule, with the second shift being a different one, obviously, with the differentials included, with lead custodians, stipend included as an output, included as part of incrementally in their hourly rate. We, we were able to take the six-step from the previous contract for the veteran custodians and utilize that to create the new one that would be, you know, to make them whole for, for the coming contract.
We were able, yeah, and I think just to wrap it up before we take it to the committee for any discussion, I think we were able to begin to bridge the gap and be able to get our custodians a fair wage. We're still significantly lower than, than, like, districts, but they were totally understanding, sitting around the table, that this is a process. They were very, very appreciative, they were very, very happy. It's not all the time you're able to get up from the negotiation table and both parties feel like they won. So, that's, that's where we're at currently. So, at this point, I think if there's any other further discussion from the committee, we can obviously put it to a vote. Move to approve. I will second it.
Any discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second. I believe this is a roll call vote. Possible, Renee?
Sure. John Burke?
Yes.
Will Sankowitz?
Yes.
G. Sylvia?
Yes.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Carolina Hernandez?
Yes.
Crystal Ing?
Yes.
Courtney Breitler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you for everybody that participated on that. Last piece of new business?
We discussed it.
Financial audit discussion was discussed earlier. Just to clarify, the consensus at the table, you know, was to move the decision to the regional FinCon. Director reports.
So, going back to your statement, but we will be, we will be looking to pay for it.
Yes.
Correct. Correct. Put that in front of you. First of all, I want to thank Ashley. She is with her daughter now, and we all want to thank her for her work. Obviously, she, she is finishing up in the next week, so publicly thank her, her team. They have just done extraordinary work. You have her report. I do want you to look at one piece in particular in terms of valuation totals for 2023, '24. Currently, we are at 392. Last year, we were at 275, so I just want you to keep that in mind. You also have in front of you, I'm sorry, any questions? These should be pretty straightforward.
Question? Yeah.
Do the best they can to be, Ashley.
Well, I had questions on Ashley's as far as, it has come to my attention that the life skills classes are not able to go on field trips because they do not have access to a nurse. So, now we're talking about violation of IEP. If kids cannot go out into the community as part of their IEPs in the life skills class, part of life skills is going out into the community, and the kids are not allowed to go out into the community because they don't have nurses, how's that going to work?
So, I will get that answer from her in the morning, and I will send it out to the school committee.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the director of student services update? I guess I have one announcement I'd like to share as, as part of this, as part of this report. I'm happy to say that the committee has voted to go into contract negotiations with Ms. Kelly Steele for the director of student services position. Okay, moving on, director of curriculum update?
So, you have everything in front of you. I just publicly want to state that the civics showcase project, where we had 11 students from Ponacquay, seven from the middle school, presented their work at the state civics project showcase at Bridgewater State. We want to thank Laura Barnicot and Rappelage and Ryan LaRue for their leadership as teachers, but we had two projects receive commendations, one of which you heard from, which was reducing the Ponacquay athletic fees. Madeline Polczek, Ava Mello, Brianna Tobikas, and Jayla Horworth received planning for impact commendation, and I think that, being the first year, it's important to know that this is a group of students who came to you, or came to us, talked about the project about reducing fees, and were recognized through the state, which is a wonderful thing. Second project was rebuilding Massachusetts high schools. Ella Rocha, Hannah Slavin, Sophia Texera, they got an overall commendation where they did an excellent job at at least four out of five categories on the project rubric. I'm going to ask for them next year to come and present to you as we look at, you know, where do we go forward and what's an ideal high school, but I think they deserve some commendation, as do the teachers. The civics project was outstanding this year, and if anybody gets a chance out by the tennis courts, you can see some of their projects. They did poster boards. Any other questions in regards to?
Curriculum. Terry spoke last time of the AP classes only being $15. There seems to be some, I would just like to have some clarification from her on.
So, that would be, I believe, I believe, don't quote me, but I believe what she was talking about was for students who would qualify for free and reduced lunch, their test by the state is reduced. But I, again, I will get all of that information from you tomorrow.
Okay. Just because there was some confusion, and I would just, if she could just say something. Thank you.
Individually, I had reached out to Terry for that same clarification.
Yeah.
And that, that was the explanation to you.
The explanation, okay.
Yeah. So, that, that price was for students qualifying for free and reduced lunch.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for curriculum assessment?
Margaret French, Freetown Finance, again. About the AP exams, it's budgeted $16,000 for it, and if it's, if everyone is paying full price, except for those kids that are free and reduced lunch, where's the $16,000 being budgeted? And, and I'm not expecting you to give me an answer now, but make a note of this as we're going through the budget and, and saying, gee, how much do we really need in that? And, and just as a point, I think, line by line, you're going to find lots of those things.
It's a good question, Margaret. I appreciate it. Moving on, subcommittee updates. Regional finance committee.
Regional finance committee, I think we said it all. I will set up a meeting, Renee. We can do it as soon as possible and have everybody meet, and we can decide how we're going to proceed with. Should we talk about the new budget during that time or leaving that as a school committee? If you want me to just stick with the audit on that agenda, I will, but I don't know if you want me to, because pretty much everybody who's going to be at this meeting will be there to talk about a new budget. Do you want me to bring that up, or do you want me to just leave it for another time? It's completely up to you guys and how you want me to do this.
I personally would leave it to the decision of the, of the FinCon.
Okay.
To me personally, I mean, if there's new information to discuss, I would say absolutely.
Okay. Well, no, just meeting to, like, talk about starting a new budget.
Oh, understood.
Yeah, if that's something you guys want on the agenda, I'm asking. Will I write up the agenda?
I really want the audit, and I want the results of the audit.
You want that to be first?
And I want the presentation.
First and foremost, you bet. All right. We'll set that meeting up ASAP.
Thank you, Crystal. Superintendent's evaluation committee.
Yeah, absolutely. It's that time of year where we got to get a couple of meetings on the calendar, Steve and Bob, so we'll reach out to get some dates to start wrapping up the summit of eval. We got to talk through, obviously, surveying, and also how, just other data points that we want to gather. So, I'll be reaching out to set up some dates.
Thank you. Wellness health committee?
Wellness committee, June 6th, we had our meeting. I had talked before about the nursing situation and the shortage that was on graduation day, and I guess there was also another call out, and Mrs. Bullock had to cover two schools, which I find is completely unacceptable. We need another nurse. And over at the middle school, it's getting to capacity where we should at least have someone else there halftime, and I also don't feel that the nurses should not be able to enjoy their lunch, and there should be someone to cover. And there's that. Thank you.
Anybody comment question? Crystal, thank you.
Can I ask you a comment, please?
Yes, please.
So, can you guys?
Can you come to the podium, please?
Yes.
That felt good.
Hi, my name is Jennifer. I'm a nurse of the October Austin Intermediate School. Nursing has been a forgotten trade in our district, been not really thought very highly of, unfortunately. Nursing needs to be important. They need a nurse over at the middle school. Her Mass Department of Public Health, they recommend one nurse per every 250 to 500 students. Over there, they have over 700. You need at least one and a half nurses over there. What are we doing to fix that? Because since April, there's been no nurse. I find that very disturbing. That needs to be fixed, and it needs to be priority.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone have a comment? Okay, thank you. Policy setup committee.
Yeah, given we will be meeting soon, and we had some dates set up, but we had, we got moved around because of a more important priority meetings, we're going to discuss the Zoom topic, probably prior to one of an upcoming session that is scheduled. I would imagine, hopefully, so.
Capital.
That makes sense.
Oh, sorry. Any other business that may properly come before the meeting? We are more than likely going to have a meeting targeting the 26th of June. I will finalize that and get, and give plenty of notice. I will, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, second.
All in favor, proceed by standing. Thank you. All opposed? All abstained? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.